Let us begin with our pledge of allegiance and asking trustee Michael Poole to meet us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with introductions of the Southfield Board of Education. I'm Yolanda Smith, Vice President.
Betty Robinson.
Um...
Michael Poole.
Ford Spencer.
Daniel Lewis, Board Trustee.
Rand Williams, Trustee.
Gerald Ditan, Trustee.
Linda Woods, Superintendent.
Debbie Trump, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Joan Newberry, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Affairs.
Marcia Williams, Interim Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
Keeping record of tonight's meeting is Ms. Nicole Christian and our, um, media and audio and visual technician is Ms. Paula Anderson. She wears many hats. And then also from M1 Studios, we have staff members Peter Putnam and Jeff Walco. Thank you. I'd like to make a special note that Board President Fern Cap is out of town and unable to be here tonight. We move now to staff and student recognition. Let's start with GLP and associates. They have presented an appreciation scholarship award in the amount of $5,000 to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, March of 2014. Our former superintendent earmarked these funds for Southfield Public Schools seniors, submitted an application, and indicated a desire to major in education. Those were the criteria. Dr. Cook Robinson is here to present $2,500 each to two students, student recipients from University High School Academy, Dale Burke and Taylor Tinsley. Let's have both students come to the lectern.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I miss you all desperately.
Come on back.
I even missed the board meeting. But it's good to see all of you and it's good to be back in the district. As you know, in 2013, I was chosen as the Michigan Superintendent of the Year. And as a result of that, GLP, one of the organizations that supports school districts in our state, decided that they would give the district $5,000 in my name because of this award. And I thought about what to do with it. I could buy pencils, I could buy paper, maybe a computer, but that would be short-term. So what I told the board I wanted to do with this money was to give two scholarships or more if possible to students who would be graduating this June and, most importantly, majoring in education. We need more and more of our students to major in education so that they can secure our future and, more importantly, pay our social security. But definitely, we want them to shape the minds that are going to create the futures for us. So I am so proud this evening to be able to give these awards. The first is to Dale Burke, $2,500.
The second is to Taylor Tinsley.
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Robinson and the entire Board of Education for helping me forward my efforts into education.
I would also like to thank you all so much to add to my education to help the education of others.
Ladies and gentlemen, come around and shake the hands of the board members. So Dale, I believe it was, and Taylor.
Who we begin to call?
Let's give them another round of applause. While we're applauding, let's have parents stand of both Taylor and Dale. If your parents are here with you. Congratulations. The Vandenberg Parent Teacher Association was selected by the National PTA to receive the Jan Harp Domina Award. This award recognizes PTAs that best demonstrate exemplary work in area of diversity and inclusion and their commitment and dedication to outreach to our families. PTA President Felicia Wright was unable to be here tonight, however, our very own Board Secretary Betty Robinson has a statement from Ms. Wright.
Okay. Ms. Wright is the PTA President of Vandenberg, and she writes, "I heard someone say the other day that Vandenberg is a world-kept secret, that the school is a unique gem in the Southfield Public Schools District that should be known not just in Michigan, but around the world." Well, last year, we won Educator of the Year at the state level, and this year, we've won the Diversity and Inclusion Award at the national level. So I'd say now Vandenberg is known worldwide. Simply put, Vandenberg is a school that lives by its motto. We are many cultures and many languages, and we aspire one family who includes all stakeholders in the education of our children. Thank you to the Southfield Board of Education Superintendent, Associate Superintendent, and School Administration for taking the time to celebrate such an achievement and honor for Vandenberg. Ms. Felicia Wright.
Moving feverishly along, the Southfield Board of Education trustees would like to thank and present a special thank you to the student board representatives in recognition of their diligence and service during the 2013-2014 school year. Ms. Kennedy Armstrong, Southfield Regional Academic Campus; David Cole, Southfield High; Gregory Cunningham, UHSA; Savannah Green, Southfield Laker High School. So I'm going to take a little privilege and, in lieu of a report, you will come up, shake our hands. We have your wonderful token of appreciation and your certificate you can grab after you shake everyone's hand. So let's, I see Kennedy is not here today, but she has promised that she will come and visit our meetings next year. And then we'll start with Southfield High's own David Cole.
Hello to the Board of Education, Superintendent, Administrators, and Community Members. My name is David Cole, and here's a Blue Jay report. First, seeing how this is my last board meeting, I would like to take this time to thank Ms. Fern Cap and Mrs. Betty Robinson, along with anyone else I'm forgetting, for picking me to represent my school. I really appreciate it. The baseball team won the Oakland Athletic Association Division Championship by defeating Hazel Park in May. Also, Southfield hosted the Michigan High School District in baseball and softball, but both failed to advance to regional. The Engineering Academy took two firsts and one fourth-place finish in the square-one electric car competition at the Michigan International Speedway for the electric car event. The Blue Jays' boys and girls track teams competed at the Michigan High School State Track Meet on May 30th. The boys finished the meet with five new All-State athletes, Devin McCloud, Matt Falcon, Ray Buford, Travis Cole, and Jordan Billyree. The Jays placed in the 100-meter dash and the 4x2 relay. The Lady Jays competed in two relays, the 4x1 and 4x2, but didn't place at the state meet. On May 15th, the Blue Jay Music Department held their spring extravaganza. The show was highlighted by the orchestra, concert, and marching band. The show ended paying homage to the graduating seniors who earned $1.6 million in scholarships. Over 250 students were honored with an ice cream social for making the honor roll for the fifth card marking period on May 19th. Congratulations to the class of 2014 for graduating on the first at Shane Park. I would like to thank you again for giving us this opportunity to represent my school and the board of education. That's Northfield, Blue Jays.
Uh, let's have Gregory Cunningham to address the community members from University High.
Good evening, everyone. Here is university's last school report of this year, this school year. Last month, on May 30th, UHSA's NHS-sponsored Book Fair at Barnes &amp; Noble, where an estimated profit of $550 to $600 was made. The profit last year was $498, and the money goes towards NHS programs such as induction, the career fair, and teacher appreciation week. About 85% to 90% of the student body bought books here for their summer reading purposes. Senior prom was on May 28th, and graduation was on June 1st, sorry, where 100% of the class of 2014 graduated, and all of them are attending college. Orientation for the new eighth-grade class, A.T., occurred last night. An orientation for the new ninth-grade class is tomorrow at 6:00 in the auditorium. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity, and it's a pleasure to sit on these meetings. Thank you.
So I see two of our new, there may be others in the audience who I can't see, but some of our new student reps for next school year. Yeah, so I'd like to ask both of you, and if there are other two are here, to please come up to the lectern and introduce yourselves and tell us who you are. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Aries Rutledge, I'm Class of 2015, and I attend University High School Academy.
Good evening.
I'm Renanna Richardson, and I'm also in Class of 2015, and I attend Southfield Laker High School.
We will look forward to their, probably skeleton of the report is December, but nonetheless, we wish you all a great summer of reading. We'll move on now to the report of the superintendent.
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is the season of celebrations, honoring graduations, promotions, step-ups, all of that, as we celebrate and we wish our youngsters the very best. And one of the things that also occurred during the last couple of weeks is we met at the Michigan First Credit Union for a wonderful celebration with 24 of our students. And these are students that have not graduated yet, and they are not stepping up out of high school yet, but they most definitely are matriculating and doing it in a wonderful way, and we're so proud of them. These 24 students, each of them received a scholarship, a Wade McCree Scholarship, and we are so proud of them. Uh, these are students from Southfield High, Southfield Laker, and the University High School. The Wade McCree Scholarships are in honor of Judge H. McCree Jr., the former Solicitor General of the United States, and a very distinguished professor at the University of Michigan. What was so special about this evening is that we had representatives from the University of Michigan, Dearborn, and the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and they each provided wonderful insight about the gift and also about the matriculation at each of these universities and the wonderful opportunities that our children have, starting now, that will await and continue with them upon graduation. Each scholarship will cover the entire cost of their tuition at each of these universities, and we're so proud of each of our students. And at this time, I'd like to ask that each of them come to the front as I read and call your names. Madonna Ado. Ben Douglas. Mariah McMillan. Chadene Richardson. Marcel Tony. passion Walton. Sarah Williams. Sierra Bowman. Erin Bradley. Nicholas Germany. Jalen Jordan. Baxter Liall. Diamond White. Angela Williams. Mariah Calhoun. Jolina Chiangong. Alexis Greer. Dana Mitchell. Ken Yugen. Arian Parker. Kristen Parker. Christopher Underwood.
Ladies and gentlemen, and if you would just start, if you could step out, and the gentleman in the white shirt, if you follow around, and you can shake each of our boards when you can, as you can around, just turn around. There you go, and we can start forming the line this way. state?
Yeah. Okay. And I will add one other point. With our Wade McCree Scholars, what's so special is that these are students who are receiving scholarships, but they have not left it yet, so we have a lot of extra time to work with those youngsters and ensure that they are moving on and getting the wonderful gift and using it when they get to school in time for them to graduate. So again, thank you. The next thing that I'd like to share with our community is an update on our communications and marketing, and I'd like for Ms. Robinson to share with us.
Good evening. Good evening, Board, and Superintendent and Administrator. Happy to share with you, this will be a very brief update. Uh, I believe Alees Shire shared a full communications report. Tonight, I just want to share with you what we've been doing most recently. Now, this is Southfield Public Schools District, so we are always, always doing exciting things. And if you keep up with the website and with the print media and the message and all that, you know what's going on, but there's always so much because the news is so great. So recently, we have just been sharing about our new technology, our investment in instructional materials, and the eBooks. How many of you have heard about the eBooks that are coming in the fall? Ah, okay. Well, I'm very happy to share with you what that's all about. Um, this is a media report, but if you want the full information, there's a press release out in the hall, which tells you all about the investments Southfield Public Schools has made. Your students will now be able to have their instructional materials online, if they're in middle school or high school, for all their core classes. They'll have support materials, they'll have writing, editing, software, and all types of things that will help strengthen them so that they can succeed and do excellent exports. And so right now, we have this press release out, we just released it not too long ago, and to let everybody know what we're doing. This press release went out to the local and national media via the PR news web. It went out, apparently, on the mobile app, so if you have that mobile app, you can access it. It's on our website banner, it's on our website news. We've done a lot of social media with it, as well as dual enrollment. You know, your students can go to college and get college credits for free, so we're doing that on social media, Facebook, Twitter, our key communicators, the message, print ads, as well as TV 16. So all of that is going on right now to let everybody know about the technology in the district. So we've had some results to the information that we're sending out. We're always monitoring to make sure the information's in and be getting out, because if we don't monitor, we don't know. So we saw that CBS News picked it up, Oakland Press, Student Educator, it was picked up in Illinois, Texas, The Tampa Tribune, Miami Herald, Michigan News, and Wisconsin, and The Washington Times, just to name a few. And we're still expecting some more hits on that. In addition, if you get the Southfield Sun, you'll see this ad will be in the paper on Thursday, and again, it talks about how the district is committed to the success of our students and to making sure that they have everything at their fingertips that they need to succeed. And finally, I just wanted to let you know that the Baptist School Fair is coming again. It'll be on August 9th from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Southfield High School, so stay tuned for more information.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson. And that concludes my report, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Derrick Trump.
Good evening. I wasn't going to give a report tonight, but since the School A Conference Committee reported our state budget today, I'll just give you a quick update on the salient facts. It didn't come out as well as we had hoped, but we did budget conservatively, knowing that this was a possibility. The Governor and his proposal had put in the foundation a 2X formula where the highest foundation schools would get $83 per pupil, foundation increase, and the lowest would get $166, following the 2X formula that, I'm sorry, I thought I called you. The 2X formula that proposal, I put into place to bring the foundations closer together so that the lower ones would come up and tell there was parity between all of the districts. What the Conference Committee came up with was something totally different, and it's almost a three-and-a-half times difference. They want the higher districts, which Southfield would be one of those to get $50 per pupil, and the lower ones to get $125, or $225. So there's a huge disparity there, and it's something that's never happened before, and it's totally outside the realm of what we've seen as far as the proposal, so I'm not sure where they came up with that. What they're trying to do now is kick that back into Conference Committee and have them redo it, because they came up with some new categoricals where they use like $20 million of state funds. What we'd like to see them do is take that $20 million, put it back in the foundation, and at least give the districts like up to $83, because what also happened is we had hoped that they would cap the retirement, MFRS rate, that's a 24.58, but they didn't, so that went up to 25.78. So what that means for Southfield is that we've got about a $10 per pupil decrease, because the MFRS increase will cost us $10 more than what we're getting, so it's about a $50 cost per pupil, but they're going to give us $50 per pupil in our foundation. Some other things that happened is the bus practices, they changed that to seven of nine, and I still need to go through and make sure and see if we can hit seven of the nine. They added some counseling and some other things to it. So what they've done every year, as we've been getting bus practices, is they broke the belt. If we hit the target, they move to target. So that's what they did again this year, because we've been hitting bus practices every year, so now we have a new set of hoops to jump through, and we may possibly get that, we'll have to look at it. The other thing they did, though, is they put the Section 147A MFRS refund back in there, so it does help us a little bit, offset some of the cost of MFRS, so that was a good thing. And as far as the rest of it, I still have to go through, I printed off the state aid act today, and it's about that big. So we'll be going through and find out just exactly, do the calculations and find out where we stand, but if you have a chance to talk to your legislators, please do so. You know, we do have tomorrow before they vote to maybe get that kicked back into the chamber. So, any questions?
I have a question and a comment. Did you say $2.25?
This is $1.25.
$1.25. And you mentioned something that I wanted to mention to the community, especially all of these young people we have in the room right now. You love social media, I need you on your social medias, because I know you're on more than one. And, you know, hey, let's call our legislator. It's a great opportunity for you to get involved, and also potentially actually make change. So, that's for parents and young people.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Good evening, everyone. All of the personnel actions and reports are contained in the conference agenda.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to share information with everyone regarding our scholarship totals for all four of our high schools, and of course, scholarships are still coming in and being awarded, but I'd like to share that at Southfield Regional Academic Campus, our students earned $337,500. Southfield Laker High School, $2,700,000. University High School Academy, $2,155,540. And Southfield High School, $18,700,000. For a total of $23,820,000. $893,040 so far. And then I'd also like to invite our BUDSIE Director, Ms. Janice Hill, and our Supervisor of Academic Achievement, Mrs. Almadine, to the podium. They're going to provide you with an update about our kindergarten boot camp and our Great Start Rating Program.
Good evening, Board and our cabinet members, as well as our audience. I'm Janice Hill, I'm the Director at BUDSIE Center.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Almadine, Supervisor of Academic Achievement, and we'd like to bring you just a brief update about an exciting program that we have, and I guess we can officially call it our second annual kindergarten boot camp. It's held at BUDSIE Center, which is located at 19080 West 12 Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. For those familiar with the city, it's right across from Southfield Laker. It's, this year is going to be Monday, June 23rd through Thursday, July 3rd, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. It's free of charge for Southfield Public Schools, who will be entering kindergarten in the fall of 2014. This year, we have doubled our numbers. We have 72 students registered, and they represent each of our K8 and elementary schools, so we have children who will be coming to kindergarten and going to each one of our schools in the district. We also have five Southfield Public Schools kindergarten teachers who will be working in collaboration with five Head Start teachers, so we'll have a kindergarten teacher and a Head Start teacher in the room together with each group of our students. Part of the reason that we do this is to develop the skills of the students entering kindergarten. Some of the things we'd like for them to do and work on is be able to name upper and lowercase letters, matching those letters with their sounds, phonemic awareness, and printing them. Name recognition is very strong. They'll also be having opportunities to retell stories and taking part in class discussions, so they learn the protocols of how to have a discussion. They'll be counting and sorting objects, doing one-to-one correspondence, correctly naming shapes and colors, and working on their independent skills, which is buttoning, tying their shoes, zipping their jackets and things of that sort. They will also be working on their technological skills. They have NABEs, which are little computers that are designed for young people there. They're round and comfortable for them, very nice, um, items. Part of the reason that we do this is to create a bridge for the students arriving into kindergarten and the parents. The family engagement outcome requirement is a part of the, um, requirements from Head Start. And as a part of the PTC, the Parent Community Partnership, we have to support families in the transition from Head Start to high school. So, it's kind of a passing the baton of the torch if you will. We also support the parents in their efforts to implement the strategies that the teachers do at school, at home. So, we'll see, you'll see a lot of, um, family activities where the parents are working with the children and doing things together. Family activities and workshops are also implemented. At one period during the day, Ms. Hill invites the professionals in to just have a workshop with the parents. So, they may have an opportunity to, um, talk to the parents for about an hour, and they get an opportunity to see some of the things that will benefit their children and support their learning at home.
Okay. And I also would like to mention a program that is, it's a pilot program, actually, the first time in the state of Michigan. Governor Snyder understands the importance of, uh, closing the achievement gap. So, it's a pilot program. It's going to run from, it actually started Monday, June 9th through August 14th. It's for nine weeks. But you will, um, children will receive a comprehensive curriculum that is aligned with the early childhood standards of quality. It also aligns with the Michigan Common Core standards. The classroom staff meet all GSRP requirements. They have to have a minimum of at least a bachelor's degree in early childhood. Children will receive nutritional, breakfast, lunch, and snack. And they will have some developmental screening and ongoing assessment. It will help build social and emotional skills. There'll be fun field trips, and they'll build strong relationships with tons of learning, having fun while they're learning. And this is no cost to you, to your family. And we're asking those families that are interested, they can call BUSTY, 'cause we're currently enrolling at 248-746-7350. Once again, it runs June 9th, 2014, and August 14th. Monday, Thursday, at 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock p.m. And we're asking these families that are interested, they can come and visit us. We want you to always remember, college begins at BUSTY. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Janice Hill, you may come back up, but you have fair warning. Um, we are at the BUSTY Head Start Policy Council Report Course. And I have asked BUSTY Williams to provide us with a report.
The BUSTY Center for Students in Southfield. We currently have two hundred and twenty-six currently enrolled, eighty-six on the waiting list, and fifty-three dropped. The average daily attendance is seventy-two percent. The Child Adult Care Program meals served following: one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen breakfasts, two thousand, five hundred and seven lunches, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one snacks. And we have met our end kind match.
Thank you.
Moving on to the federal funds allotted. Federal funds allotted below one point two million dollars. We have spent one million, forty-four thousand so far to date. Balance remaining is a hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight twenty-four. We have committed costs, which means balance of contracts and benefits to spend. We've committed one hundred and sixty thousand. The amount of balance to spend, excuse me, is thirty-one thousand. Open purchase orders and substitute calls is twenty-three thousand, four thirty-eight. Uncle Sam, give us money, and we will not return it back to us. Thank you, Mrs. Hill. That is.
Now, we are on to some of the funds that we've had. Starting with action items. Uh, I do wanna mention that, uh, closer to the end of the meeting, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed, uh, closed session. This is the request from Mr. Bennett. Let's begin with our consent agenda. Report number fifty-two eighty-seven.
I move that we open and approve the consent agenda, report fifty-two eighty-seven.
Second.
Great. Questions, comments? Ms. Secretary, would you please call the roll for the votes? Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All eight. Thank you. Um, in the words of my President America, we just paid the bills. Uh, report number fifty-two eighty-eight, new revised policy, second reading and approval. A motion to approve, report fifty-two eighty-eight.
I move that we open and approve, report fifty-two eighty-eight. Support.
Here. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Dr. Cassard, Madam Secretary, the vote. Okay. Smith?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Thank you. And just for the community information, policy fifty-three thirty point zero one, the Epinephrine Policy, that was a state mandated type of thing. And so, I'd love for you to dig into that, take a good reading of it, and see what our wonderful state has asked us to do, but hasn't provided us any money to do it with. So, thank you so much. Let's move to report fifty-two eighty-nine, the recommendation to approve MHSAA's membership resolution. This will allow our high school athletic teams the eligibility to participate in statewide tournaments sponsored by the Michigan High School Athletic Association. A motion, please, to open and approve. I'm calling for a motion to open and approve, report fifty-two eighty-nine.
I move that we open and approve, report fifty-two eighty-nine.
Anyone like to second that? Second. Thank you. The move is properly seconded. Are there any questions, comments? Madam Secretary, the votes, the rolls, the votes. Ms. Buchanan?
No.
No? Would you like to share your feelings with no?
Um, it is my feeling that the Michigan High School Athletic Association is not caught up with the needs of current, uh, high school athletes. And until they revise and change some of their, um, old and outdated policies, I will always stand against us in the way that we just say.
Thank you. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
You know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. Uh, report fifty-two ninety is the recommendation to approve the resolution to participate in school of choice, Section 105(c). Um, let's have Dr. Wood give a little more information before the motion. Certainly. Um, each year-
On the board, on the board, you have to open, uh, you have to open the motion before we have the question.
Thank you. That's appropriate. May I have a, uh, a motion to open and approve?
I move that we open and approve, report fifty-two ninety, the recommendation to approve resolution to participate in school of choice for extra long classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, each year, we participate in a program called Open Enrollment, which allows a participating district and the board has to approve for us to participate with other, um, districts in the county of Oakland. So, what that means is that, uh, there may be students who are living in another Oakland County area, school district area, and we open up seats in, uh, certain particular grades that will allow our students to attend our schools. And so, that's the gist of our open enrollment period. And so, we have to publicly open it, publicly announce it, and have the board to approve it. And there's a window of time, uh, that we will, and you'll hear about it in Ms. Robinson's advertisements and publications, which gives students who may be matriculating somewhere else, an opportunity to come back to Southfield.
Um, and just for clarification, too, we only, only schools that are open school districts, um, such as Southfield, uh, participate in this without us having to, uh, sign any release of student, uh, funds.
Yes.
So, it's an open participation between schools within the Oakland, um, Oakland IAS.
Yes. Good information. Madam Chair, call for the votes. Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, report fifty-two ninety-one is the recommendation to approve contracted services for the Division of Instruction. Can I have a motion to open and approve?
I move that we open, report number fifty-two ninety-one. Recommendation to approve contracted services for the Division of Instruction. Support.
Thank you. Dr. Wood?
Certainly. Uh, each year, I come to the board and to the community to request the opportunity for the district to participate in partnership with individuals and organizations, such as, um, ASCD, which is the Association of Curriculum Development, which is in a partnering organization as we move through and help our teachers with differentiated instruction. We also have other partners, uh, and individuals, such as our Special Education Department. We have a contracted service provider who assists us with the tremendous work that we're doing at the high school level. We have, uh, another contracted service individual who supports us with counseling and also the scholarships and the career development that, uh, you're hearing about tremendous, uh, work that's taking place in our high schools. We also have contracted services with, um, an individual who has been helping us with our partnership council and is willing to continue to help in that capacity. Uh, we have another contracted service provider who provides us with coaching, um, work with differentiated instruction, and we'd like to bring that individual back again for this upcoming school year. And many of you heard at our last board, no, the previous board meeting, about our strength-based counseling. And so, we also have added to our list this year an individual consultant who will support us again this year with strength-based counseling at our ninth-grade academies. So, those are the components of this action item.
Great. Madam Secretary, if there's no questions? I was gonna add, if I titled one, I titled two dollars. Those are, no, right there. Uh, call for the votes, please. Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Great. I was ahead of myself in my notes. Uh, report fifty-two ninety-three, proposal for instructional tech contract. Right, I don't have a ninety-two. I have a ninety-three.
Uh, report fifty-two ninety-two is the proposal, Ed-Ed mentum instructional technology contract.
Hmm, okay. It is on the agenda, but in our packet, it's ninety-three.
I agree.
Okay. So, we're at ninety-two. Um, I'd like someone to move to open and approve, report fifty-two ninety-two.
I move that we open and approve, report fifty-two ninety-two. Support.
Thank you. Dr. Wood, is there any additional information for us?
Uh, just, um, it's information we've, uh, used before. Uh, but I'd like to just again, update our community that Edementum is a tremendous resource that we have in the district. Many of you have heard of Study Island at the K-8 level where our children, uh, can go online from home or in school to support their academic reinforcement of skills. Uh, we also have heard of Plato, which we often are utilizing with our credit recovery, with our, um, remediation, and also provides opportunities for students to take, uh, online courses. And that is happening at our high school level. This is all a part of Edementum. We, at the elementary, we integrate, integrate it, Reading Eggs, Mathematic City. So, these are all nice, uh, online, uh, websites and access for, uh, learning for our children, and we would like to continue the opportunity for our children next year. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Secretary, the votes. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myson, yes? Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
And Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
You know. All right. Let us then, um, uh, move to the recommendation to approve everyday mathematics, K-5 instructional materials.
I move that we open, report number fifty-two.
Three, three. Three.
Recommendation to approve everyday mathematics, K-5 instructional materials.
Here.
Support.
Is there any additional information for the board?
There really is not any additional information.
Okay. And, um, as you see in your agenda packet, those of you who are here who also access it online, some of the background and the recommendations the superintendent has made. Madam Secretary, the votes, please. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Myson, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe we're at fifty-two ninety-four.
Correct.
Uh, recommendation to approve NWEA measures and academic progress assessments for the 2014-16 school year. A motion to approve, open and approve.
I move that we open and approve, report fifty-two ninety-four. Support.
Thank you. Dr. Wood?
Okay. Um, so the board is what we're continuing with. Um, Ms. Zabinski, would you like to come to the podium and just give us an update on where we're headed with NWEA?
Good evening, board members and administrators and community. With NWEA, we have now completed two years of testing. In our district, we test three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. We are one of the few schools in Oakland County that uses all three available testing periods to assess our students and further instruct information during mid-year as well as end of the year. Those scores are then used for summer school as needed, and then also shared with teachers in the fall, so they have an immediate starting place when students come back in the fall. So, what we're proposing this year is that we continue our testing program with the grades as we have kindergarten through eleventh grade for areas math and ELA, and reading and ELA. There's two separate tests. And then, continue our testing with science in grades three through 10. What we're finding is that we are seeing improvements across the board as the years go on. But getting longitudinal data also then will give us an ability to see not just gains within a school year, but gains from year to year with our students.
And why do we do this?
We do this to help, one, inform our instruction for our teachers. Uh, we have really worked hard as a district to share how to use our data from our NWEA assessments in our district. And I can tell you from some meetings that I have attended, we, um, have a unique situation in our district where teachers are actually actively using this data, asking questions about this data, and then changing or improving what they're doing in the classroom to help address the needs of the students in front of them. We also use this to measure progress of a student within one school year. So, on status assessment, a student may demonstrate growth from one year to another, but if they started at a lower level, that growth may not bring them up in one year to a proficient level. What NWEA and the data from this testing allows us to do is see that the students measure how much progress they are making instead of just saying, you didn't make it this year, you didn't make it next year. But see how close they're getting to that proficient target so we can continually narrow our focus of instruction to move them forward.
Did our audience understand? It's very important, 'cause this is in addition to the-
This is in addition to the state testing that's done, um, and it's a, it's really, I'm very proud to represent the district when I go to county meetings, because we were one of the first schools in our county to invest in this kind of testing itself where we're not getting a subsidy from the state or any other group to actually promote this testing and being able to focus our instruction and meet students where they are and move them forward. So, it, it really is on the cutting edge of what we can do for our students.
And we thank you so much.
So, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm glad that you, uh, mentioned that, Ms. Zabinski, because I was gonna have Dr. Wood say that Southfield Public Schools was, I thought, the first school district in Oakland County in the district, K-11, and all three areas.
We are the first thing to use K-11 throughout, and especially to use the computerized assessment to be able to, um, test our students. But we are definitely, many districts are doing maybe three through eight. Um, very, very few test into their high school years using math assessment. Um, and we are one of the few that have moved ours down into the early elementary, and we are finding very valuable information with that, that added. I know we can- I know we can, I'm very conscious of not overtesting our students, but when we get valuable information from the assessment, those are, they're called formative assessments. And so that's a very important piece that we need to use because the formative assessment allows us to target our instruction as we move those students forward.
Absolutely, to target the instruction and to also just reiterate the importance of demonstrating for every child how they are growing academically, and that growth piece is what is very important also. And so I thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
I think it's important also for the community to know that, you know, this is a much more accurate assessment of student achievement as opposed to a snapshot given one time of the year.
Yes.
And it's almost as though schools are set up to fail by giving our most important test as the students return from summer vacation so we know that their summer lapse, and then immediately we go in to meet, we propose to measure our academic assessment, and it's probably the worst time and the worst possible method of trying to measure student achievement. We go a step further by making sure that we assess our students three times a year so we have a more accurate idea of our, you know, how our students are progressing through the system. It's very important that we understand that because, you know, as public schools are being hammered, you know, on for low achievement, you know, they refuse to recognize the excellence that we have achieved, the standards that we achieve here in Southfield Public Schools. Even when we've invited, you know, members of the governor's staff to come down here, it still fails to get beyond just the point of, you know, them coming and seeing what we're doing and understanding that we're actually ahead of the curve. So, you know, they still wanna beat down the public school system, but we keep fighting them off with programs like this, and I think that, you know, we set the standard for the entire state of Michigan. We don't have the highest achieving African-American students in the state of Michigan for no reason. And this is just evidence of that. So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna add, the other thing, the piece that's so important with this this year is that because, if you're following in the media, the state is in flux about what they're doing with their testing, and there's all kinds of uncertainty there. And so allocating funds to continue our testing provides a stable benchmark of accountability within our district that we are familiar with and that we, we can, that we can measure our own standards regardless of what's going on outside of us. And so I, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the table, and we're gonna vote, but I just wanted to mention, I don't need it today, but I just noticed the cost of it went up a little bit from last year. I still think it's well worth our, our dollar. It goes well beyond how much we spend. I just wonder if they're providing something else.
I'll make sure to get that information.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Ms. Scott, yes? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you. We move on to fifty-two ninety-five, which is the recommendation to approve college board, springboard math instructional resources.
I move that we open and approve report fifty-two ninety-five. Support.
Thank you. Dr. Wood?
Additional information?
There's really no additional information.
Okay.
Just we're moving forward with springboard, and we've been using that in our district, and we're extending that into, you know, through the pre-district.
Yes, so for the questions or comments, Madam Chair, Madam Secretary of the vote?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Scott, yes? Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. For action, extension of contracts for special education teachers, report fifty-two ninety-six.
I move we open report number fifty-two ninety-six, extension of contracts for special education teachers. Support.
Thank you. And, yeah, so, there's information in our packet, is there anything beyond that that you wanted to mention?
Um, no, I just wanted to share this is a very good thing, to provide this service for our community during a period when school is not typically in session, when we have traditional schooling. It means that if we have children who have special needs that move into our community, we have a responsibility by law to find out who they are, if they're referred to us, to identify and to assess. And so that is the need that the law requires that we provide, and we're extending that to these two individuals.
Right, and you said the law requires this, Board Member Lewis, did you wanna mention that IDA piece from earlier, the forty percent, the eighty percent? Okay, no.
Well, I, I mentioned to my colleagues, Laura, that the IDA, according to the law, the federal government is supposed to fund it by forty percent. However, the federal government has failed to live up to its promises. I believe today that the federal government has only funded, has funded, has only funded the Special Education Department by far under sixteen percent. So I think that as a nation, we did our respect together and put, and put our money and our energy towards our children.
All right, Madam Chair, Madam Secretary?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Scott, yes? Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
You have it.
All right. If I, um, could, I'd give us an applause for you doing that in lightning speed.
You mean me? You, you mean you? I'm not an average man.
Oh, wonderful. So, Ms. Tripp, some information about fiscal funding.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I gave you the correct information, and I checked my notes, and the range is fifty to one seventy-five. And another thing that's really important about that is at the lower end of the per pupil funding, where they're getting the hundred and seventy-five dollar increase, which is three and a half times what we're getting, are all the charter schools and the public school academies.
I'll probably have you say that one more time, I couldn't, specifically for the listening audience.
The range of fifty to one seventy-five, we are going to get fifty dollars per pupil in our foundation increase. The public school academies and the charter schools will be getting a hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's further into the design to starve out, you know, the public school system and then tell us that we're failing simply because, you know, they're not giving you the money, and you turn around and tell you, you're doing a bad job of having the money.
And then they're also mandating things, and the funding is not very supportive.
That's correct.
Most of those kids that are from charter schools fail on first quarter, and they come here and the money come with them. No, it does not. They're not here and count me, we don't get any funding for them.
So we can verify.
I recognize your puzzle, what's in there, Board Member Williams, because we were in a session somewhere, one of the many things we sit in on, and they said, oh, no, you can go back and get that money.
The law's changed.
So, it's a conversation to continue to have, and then sometimes things can be double-edged swords because you ask for fifty kids' money back, and we lose sixty-two, and so we have to trade sixty-two, so, but that's for us to continue the conversation and for community members to get in touch with their lawmakers and really hold their feet to the fire on these types of issues. So, we are now at the point of information items. These items do not require board action and therefore are wonderful end-table reading during the week, as you go through your week, the perp training report. However, the gift to the board, we would like a trustee to read that gift report, and, how about Board Member Cannon?
Following donation, following donation was provided to the Southfield Public Schools. Mr. and Mrs. Craig, Mr. and Mrs. Craig and Kathleen Heickel donated books to the Southfield Elementary High School library, which are detailed on the attached list, and estimated the value at one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And again, we'd like to thank the district's title for their constant, you know, donations. I mean, this is a regular donation that they made to the school district, and we absolutely appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Right. And also the bill summaries in that information item portion as well. All right, so, we are at our public comment portion of the meeting. As a note, comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of the school principal or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. And we have Lauren Lockhart, who is, your name and address when you get up there, and is coming to talk with us just briefly about mental health first aid training.
My name is Lauren Lockhart, and I am a Southfield High alumni and former Wayne McCree recipient, recipient and current University of Michigan Masters of Social Work student focusing in management and mental health. I would like to thank the Southfield Board of Education for inviting me here for a Southfield community to speak about mental health first aid and the youth mental health first aid curriculum. Currently, youth mental health first aid trainings are offered through Training and Treatment Innovations Incorporated, known as TTI, via a generous grant received from the Michigan Department of Community Health earlier this year. Through the grant, TTI is available to provide free eight-hour trainings to any individual that services youth, including those working in school districts, organizations, businesses, et cetera, located in Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County. The grant money is a part of a federal program implemented in response to the Sandy Hook Elementary shootings and other mass shootings throughout the country. One of the goals of the program is to ensure that teachers and other adults who interact with students can identify children with mental health conditions and link them and their families to help, jumpstart their recovery to health, healthy, productive lives, and possibly prevent in crisis situations. Youth Mental Health First Aid is an evidence-based and internationally recognized program that helps facilitate. There are several open courses scheduled for this. If Southfield Public Schools would like to have this training, there's a number on the bottom of the slide that they can contact. I will also be available after the meeting for further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, you done in that short period of time.
And in light of, in light of the intensity today, we just further highlight the need for a program such as this. Tragic, tragic. Mm-hmm, that's okay, in light of the intensity today.
So, I'm charging our superintendent, please feel free to stick around so she can give you the proper contact information and, you know, see what, what kind of partnering or opportunities are available.
Thank you.
Board members, and I'm gonna diverge from the typical boom, 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 and I'm just gonna randomly start with, Mr. Cool?
Well, I had a chance to, had a chance to email, because I'm email, okay? And that's another fine example of the kind of jobs that our teachers do if you're in the Southfield Public School District. I don't care how you wanna slice it and dice it, at the end of the day, there's one, I just for graduation. Graduation rates are very important. It's a marker of student achievement. Got an email to say from the National School Board Association, that's one of the good things we do all year long, once a year we get a chance of network and talk with other school board members from around the country, and what you're doing, what's working, what's been successful. And we, a couple times a year, meet with our colleagues around the state as well. Graduation rates are really important. And for those who know it or not, there's a lot of stuff that goes around the state that goes on around the state that you just don't hear about. And some of the graduation rates that I hear about in other places are just unbelievably high. But I'm gonna share with you a document that I got today from the United States Department of Education, and for the first time, more than eight out of ten public school students are graduating with a bump. That's important, one out of eight. The United States percentages for two thousand twelve was eighty-one percent. That's, so that sets the standard, eighty-one percent. In two thousand seven, it was seventy-four percent. That was an increase of about seven percent. In two thousand twelve, I know our graduation rates are well above ninety percent. That puts us in the worst of the best. Now let me talk about Michigan. Everyone wants to talk about their school district and point to this and point to that, but at the end of the day, it's about what your graduation rates are like. In Michigan, in two thousand twelve, seventy-seven percent. Two thousand seven, it was seventy-seven percent. No percentage increase. Among all males, it was seventy-four percent. Among females in Michigan, it was eighty-two percent. And this is really a study. Among American Indians, it was sixty-six percent. Under Asian-Americans, it was ninety-two percent. Among our Latino community, it was fifty-one percent. In the black community, it was sixty percent. And in the white community, it was eighty-two percent. You know, we know what our stuff will get compared to the overall numbers. I know in two thousand twelve, we were well above ninety percent. That speaks to the quality of education that we provide to our students, that our teachers provide to our students here in Southfield. So I just wanted to bring that, bring that to your attention, because you won't read in the newspapers. So I'm here that Southfield graduated ninety, over ninety percent of their clients. I think university high school, they graduate a hundred percent. So, applaud yourselves, a job well done. The other thing I wanted to just say publicly was congratulations to Dr. Lewis, Dr. Lewis on his challenge. But I also want you to know that it is a moment in your life that you should celebrate. You spent several weeks looking at some of the best educated minds in this country. And why don't we even told it? But they were very, all of them were highly qualified and very well educated. And at the end of the day, in the process of looking at all the candidates and all the pieces, and how all the pieces fit into that puzzle, you were the only candidate to let and celebrate.
Mr. Cool, anyone else? Board Member Robinson, they touched, the seat there's volunteers. Are anyone else on the board matter they like to?
Good game, all right, baby. You know, you can't do that.
Mr. Cool, definitely, board matter.
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate our newly hired superintendent, Dr. Wood. I think she's doing an excellent job. She already came in and made a wider investment, invested three million dollars towards technology, and technology is imperative because our world is constantly changing, and technology is growing and increasing. And it's important that we as a district keep up with the pace, and we have to put all of our, we have to put our money into technological tools because education is important. I firmly believe that education is the passport to the future, and that tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today. So we have to prepare our students today so that they can be possible tomorrow. I also want to emphasize that it's important that we put students above our own self, and it's important that we continue to remind our political leaders to put money towards our students, to place our students as their main priority. Cuba is the poorest country in Latin America, but there's the first thing, there's a free education up to a PhD. And if Cuba can do it, I know that America can. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I'm ready.
Mr. Williams?
I'm ready.
Mr. Williams?
I'm ready.
Mr. Williams?
I'm ready.
I'm ready. But I would be remiss if I had to say, really, the job's all done, Dr. Wood. But negotiations are still underway. And we start to play a higher role in our work. We hope to have this taken care of and voted on by the way.
Yeah. And since this is our last meeting in terms of general meeting, I just want to encourage parents and students to really take advantage of this summer academically. You know, there's a world of students who are learning year-round, and I think it's good to have this recess, but it's also good to use it wisely, you know, not just playing your new games and hanging out down the street and whatnot. I see a parent looking at a child right now. But so I wish all the great summer, because I know we're writing this promotion week, promotion week, graduation last week. Even our sweet little bussy kids, they got a chance to be at the later auditorium because of Ms. Hill and their staff. So I'm excited for your summer, and stay safe, play safe.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You just, you sparked, you sparked something, you know, with this being the end of the year. This is always my favorite time of the year, because it's the time of passing. We have students that are leaving us, and then I just went through the list of retirees, and we have, you know, employees that are leaving us as well. So it's, you know, this is almost like the circle of life for public schools, and Southfield Public Schools. So it's a great time in terms of seeing the growth of our students. And I'm at the point now where I've seen so many of them at the beginning, in kindergarten, in first grade, and, you know, now they're ninth graders and receiving college scholarships already, and, you know, those that have already matriculated. So this is the kind of, this is the time of year that, you know, I normally break down. But I did pretty good this year. I didn't, I only cried one time at graduation as opposed to prior years. But I just want to congratulate all of our, you know, recent graduates on this and wish them nothing but success in their future endeavors. And to our retirees, we want to thank you for your service to Southfield Public Schools, and we want to thank you and wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors as well. And that's it.
Wonderful. Read the future meetings in late and then come back for that closed session motion. Announce future meetings, June 17th, study session at 6:00 PM, K, school program, and the truth in taxation budget approval. June 24th, 6 o'clock, student hearings, Ms. Tapp, Lewis Robinson. July 1st, the board organizational meeting. July 2nd, special board meeting with NLI. August 15th through 16th, board retreat. I'd like someone to please move to go into closed session after the regular board meeting.
I believe that we go into closed session.
Thanks. Call for the vote. Lewis?
Lewis?
Cool?
No.
So we will take a five-minute recess, so you all can make your cards, and you will proceed, five minutes.